Okay, I'll call this meeting to order at 6:31 PM. Can I get a roll call, please?
Maxan Dobson.
Here.
Tim Cafiso.
Yeah.
Dennis Heffernan.
Here.
Lori Mallett.
Here.
Robert Zukas.
Here.
Darrell Breton.
Here.
Peter Brachis.
Here.
Bob Hamilton.
Here.
Julian Kiska.
Here.
Mark Harrison here. He is not on the table.
Okay. He's not on there.
Greg Colby.
He wore him out last night.
He's here.
He's here.
Sam.
Yeah, Greg Colby, are you here?
Yes, I am here.
And Jay DeRose, the alternate, is here, okay. All right, thank you. Okay. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. The Republic of which stands.
Justice for all.
And I'll just read the Plastow Budget Committee, due to COVID-19 coronavirus crisis, and in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, is authorized to meet electronically. We will be taking roll call votes this meeting. First item is to review, approve the minutes from last budget meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the January 5, 2021 Budget Committee Meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
I'd like to make an adjustment or amendment, if I can, on page seven, three quarters of the way down in the Solid Waste Budget Contract Talks. It's, I believe it stated correctly that I stated that the suggested current proposed cost for central recycling dumpsters, $1,500 a month. That's untrue. I don't know whether or not I stated that number or not. I probably did, but that number's wrong. It's only about $200 a month. I believe it was stated last night that it was $2,400 a year for a centrally located recycling dumpster. I'd just like to make that correction on my bad.
Okay.
Thank you.
Although, do you think you said what's here?
I don't know if I said that or not. I'd have to go back and look into video.
Okay.
I don't remember, but she's pretty good about catching what we do say. So, all I do, I just caught this and realized that that's very wrong.
So should we make an addition, just the actual amount is 200, since you might've said it, but we're just trying to rectify the information?
I believe we would have to make an amendment to the minutes. If the minutes reflect the actual, what was said, then I would have to make an amendment to the minutes to-
Add that.
Change what I said, yeah.
Okay.
So I'd like to do that.
Okay.
That, or you could do one under all business.
So approve the minutes because you might've said it, and then just add that to our minutes for next time?
Yeah.
But, yeah, I think that's better. Just to clarify for the record, the right amount is-
So just write that down.
For all business.
For all business, and it's already recorded that we did it.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
That's all right. Any other errors or corrections? No?
No.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Approve- Oh, sorry, yeah, roll call. My bad.
Yeah, roll call, that's right.
Can I, just a quick comment on, it's been great, the minutes have been outstanding all year.
Yeah, she does awesome, awesome work.
It's just great to have a note taken on board, so compliments.
Yeah.
Definitely. Unanimous.
We're ready for the roll call vote, thank you.
Max.
Yes.
Sam Cafiso.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Lori Mallett.
Yes.
Robert Zukas.
Yes.
Darrell Breton. Darrell?
Can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, Darrell, do you approve the minute?
She doesn't have a mic.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Bob Hamilton?
Yes.
And Julian Kiska.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries, 900. Is anybody here for budget-related public comment? Did you say you had someone?
We have, we have two individuals connected. I'm not sure if they're here for the public hearing.
Okay.
But if either or anybody out there would like to speak, if you can raise your hand on the GoToWebinar platform. No response.
Okay. So nobody's here for a public comment. We have to finalize the warrant recommendations. We voted on most of them. The ones that were outstanding are in our packet. The first one is funding for repair and construction to fix the cap of the Plastow landfill. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate $575,000 to fund the work for the Plastow landfill closure to comply with DES regulations? Two, construction engineering and permit oversight. Three, construction contingencies. Four, remover of old salt shed. Three, tire removal. The funds will be withdrawn from the general fund, unassigned fund balance. The special warrant article will be non-lapsing appropriation per RSA 32:7VI and will not lapse until the completion of the landfill cap repair and construction is completed or by December 31, 2022, whichever is sooner. Is there a motion to recommend that?
I'll make a motion to recommend the article.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion? Yes.
Do we know the amount to be, the amount in the unassigned fund balance?
Greg, do you have that number?
No, I do not.
Can I, just to add to it, do we know that there's $575,000 to cover that?
I would assume that's correct.
Okay.
Yes, there would be. I just don't know an exact number.
Okay. Yeah, Bob?
Greg, could you tell us if it's in the vicinity of $2 million?
I would say it will be at least $2 million. I believe last year it was in the neighborhood of 2.6. I don't believe we have dropped below 2 million. So, it will be in excess of 2 million would be my estimation.
Any other questions? Yep, Pete?
Well, I'm a little concerned that if we're just capping the landfill, why are we throwing in removing the tires and the old salt shed? Just adds cost at this time of, in our position where we're spending an awful lot of money, extra money, and we're just throwing that in, and so, it was something that probably is not required, so.
Madam Chairman, I can answer that?
Oh, okay, you're, you're here, okay.
Yes, unfortunately, I'm at another location and another meeting, so. So the answer to the question is, is that the article has the base amount for the construction of approximately $415,000, and it has a contingency of 20% that's approximately $85,000. So that is $500,000. And then it has a construction engineering oversight component that they actually want about $90,000, but I, I'm going to work with them to reduce that number down, hopefully to 75. And to answer Budget Committee Member Brachi's question about the tires and the tearing down of the salt shed, when we went out for proposals, what we wanted to do is have alternate prices in case that we wanted to complete all three of these with the same contract. So, we have prices, but this does not necessarily mean that we're going to do it or not do it. If, the way that the warrant article is worded is that it's up to the $575,000, and if there are funds remaining, then we would work to remove the tires and the salt shed with the remaining funds. And any order would be, it would be the construction, the contingency, the construction oversight, and then we can pick one or the other, whether it's the tearing down of the salt shed and then the tires, and we would exhaust the funds if there were any funds left over. So it's not that it was a priority, it's that we went asked for some pricing for those contracts.
Julian?
Yes, yeah, I'm looking at the wording of this warrant article, and when you say you're going to do something, people will then thereafter say, "You promised to do it," even though it's only if we can afford, we have the money to do it at that point. I think the wording should be changed so that it implies, so it actually says that we will do as much as we can, and it might not all get done, you know, with an importance of priority. But the warrant article really doesn't say that. It says you're going to do it with this money, so that gives me a question.
I get what you're trying to say, but since our position as Budget Committee is just to give our recommendation based on the monetary, we only have a half hour to get through all of this, so I think that's something you should discuss with the Board of Selectmen and change the-
Well, I'm bringing it up now because it delays another week if I don't bring it up now.
Okay, well, that's on the record. Can we move on to, okay.
Yeah, I have a, I'm sorry, with someone else.
Oh, Darrell?
Yeah, Darrell.
Yeah, real, just a quick question for Mark. Mark, is, is there anybody within the organization of the town that could do the oversight, or is that something that's too specialized for what we have?
Yes, Darrell, I appreciate the question. It's, it's really specialized. In fact, I would even suggest to you that if we had a PE, professional engineer on, on staff, it would be a different type of work than the PE would be used to, because this is all regulatory work with the Department of Environmental Services and EPA. So, in fact, when we went out for engineering, we could only get proposals from firms that qualify with DES to actually do this work. I hope that answers it.
Yeah, it does, thank you.
One more, Max.
Sam had a question.
Yeah, I didn't realize, this question, I guess, is directed toward Mark, but I don't know if there's an actual answer to it. I didn't realize you were with us. In the, in the explanation, it explains, and if I remember from earlier proceedings about this, that this is a proactive approach, so we're not under the gun, or are we being mandated by any agency to do any of this work? In particular, fixing the, the, basically the pothole in the middle of the landfill, let alone remove the tires or remove the salt shed? Am I correct?
Okay, there's several questions here, I'll try to answer all of them.
Thank you.
So we're not under any mandate right now. We're on the radar. We do a monitoring program of the landfill required to do that. All landfills have to be monitored, and you have to file a report. So they're well aware of the deficiencies. So one of the deficiencies is, as you stated, was the collapsing of the landfill resettling and the cap that's been disturbed. The second issue is that the salt shed, the salt was migrating down the hill onto somebody else's property. The third issue is that the methane, a gas, in the monitoring, there needs to be some work to mitigate some of the methane gas. So the tires are not on the radar. The tires are more of a eyesore, if you will, but we would look to eliminate that eyesore at the time that we eliminate the salt shed. You actually have to eliminate the salt shed, take that out of the way so you can get to the tires, more or less. So that would be the order that we would do it. And then we would try to remove as many tires as we can, and then recap that area where the tires are.
I, I know the salt shed is near the landfill. Is technically the salt shed and the tires incorporated in the landfill? Is there rubbish on top of them, or are they in the same vicinity?
I can tell you that it's in the landfill, but I can't tell you where the trash is located. All I know is where those tires are percolating out of the ground.
Thank you.
Shall we take a vote on our recommendation?
Can I just-
Oh, yep.
Julian brought up a good point, a couple things. One, if I'm looking at this article, yeah, I would think that all of that is included in it, A. B, question is, if there's something stated in the article, don't you have to complete what's the town is voting on?
Well, can I add to it? Look at it the way the salt shed was worded, that there were going to be solar panels on it. Technically, as long as you do them eventually, is the answer I've heard, as long as there is no date that says it needs to be done by, that's, I don't know if that's the correct answer enough, or you're looking for, but that's what I've heard answered before with similar articles.
Julian?
I think that's a misinterpretation of an explanation. They, the solar panels are still getting put on there, they're just a little delayed. Under the first, under the first warrant, they will be put up, it just won't be the whole roof. So it didn't get put off, it's still getting done. It's just, the warrant article never said how much solar panels, we're still getting them, so-
Or a time.
It's not really being put off, it's just, it wasn't to the right degree that we intended originally because of price, price changes. But, you know, so I get your point.
Okay.
It really, it really wasn't said that we can't not do it, it was that it was just delayed.
There was no specific time?
There was no timeframe in the non-expiring warrant article.
We got to keep going.
Yeah, we got to keep going. I think we should take a vote. Okay, all those in favor of recommending Article P 2111, say aye.
We got to do a voice.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call. Oh, keep forgetting. Darrell, what are you doing to us? Sorry.
You ready?
Yes.
Okay, Max, Sam, Dobson.
No.
Sam Cafiso.
No.
Dennis Heffernan.
No.
Lori Mallett.
No.
Robert Zukas.
No.
What was that?
No. Sorry.
Darrell Breton.
No.
Peter Brachis.
No.
Bob Hamilton.
No.
And Julian Kiska.
Yeah, even though it says 000 on this, I know the Board of Selectmen discussed it, so I'm going to have to say yes.
Okay, so 810. Well, so-
180.
No, it's the opposite, 180. So, yeah, so not recommended. Okay. All right, the next one, P 2115, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $140,000 to be added to the existing fire department apparatus capital reserve fund? Furthermore, name the Board of Selectmen as agents to expend from the fire department apparatus capital reserve fund. Is there a motion to recommend this?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Dennis?
I'll second.
Bob Hamilton, seconded. Discussion? Yeah.
Where did this come from? This is the first I've heard any word of this. Julian, is the Board of Selectmen aware of this?
Let me look at the-
I've been watching meetings and-
Doesn't look right to me.
Um, is this-
This sheet is the first time I've seen this sheet, so.
Yeah, this is not the overnight firefighter station coverage, correct?
No.
Something new.
Let me, let me look it up on my-
Well, we do have a transfer to capital reserve fund self-contained breathing apparatus.
Okay, we voted on it. Even though your sheet says we didn't vote on it, my sheet says we did vote on it.
No, we, this is the first time I have ever seen this, Julian. This just got sent to me today, so we didn't vote on this.
Oh, wait a minute, it's a different number.
Yeah, 2107 is the-
I, I think this is for like fire trucks and-
This is for the fire, this is-
Right?
Correct.
You know how we always put money away for a fire truck every year?
Yeah.
Like a hundred thousand?
It says for the orderly replacement of the fire department vehicles.
Yeah.
But it just is confusing because we have a self-breathing apparatus warrant.
This is like a, a annual one we do.
Yeah, I'll correct that. It, we had a 2115, but this is not a 2115 we had before, so I don't know why the number was used the same.
Okay.
No, we did not discuss this, and I, this is the first time I've seen this one.
So are you going to abstain?
I have not seen this one until today.
Okay, yeah.
I'd just like to make a comment that this is a significant increase over what it was, but I think it's because of the cost of replacement of fire vehicles.
Yeah, Dennis?
Did this come up in CIP?
Yes, uh, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, Bob's okay.
My understanding was that it was increased because of the replacing Tower III. It was going to be over a million doll, or a million, almost a million and a half. So, instead of having to incur that, it didn't give, you know, all-in-one lump sum when it, when it goes, it was originally put forward, and I remember even looking on the, on the sheet that Mark had given us, or Mark had worked out in coming up with how to replace these vehicles in a timely manner, and stretching out as long as we could. I think that's where this came from, was so that we could then have a fund, so we're not getting hit with all this money all at once when they go down.
So this is a deposit into this capital reserve fund, so do we know what's in that fund as of now?
Give me a minute.
Okay, we can still continue our discussion. I, my other question, I don't know if there's an answer to it, how often do they ask to deposit into this fund?
Almost annually.
Yes.
Every year.
Right, but normally that's, this is right up front from the very beginning of, of warrant talks. I don't understand why this is just getting dropped in at literally the last minute.
Okay, do you have the number, Greg?
Yeah, there was $100,000 put into that fund during 2020, and it's, at the end of November, it had approximately $352,000.
That's not right to me.
Okay, yeah, Bob?
Was, was, what was passed in March added to that yet?
With that 352, yes.
Okay.
That includes the $100,000 that was passed March of 2020.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Pete?
I'm confused, Julian, if you, you say that you haven't seen this yet?
This was not presented to the Board of Selectmen yet?
Well, I was always under the-
And I'm a little concerned why someone's getting slipped at the last minute, too.
I was always under the understanding that the board acts as a board, and not a single individual can do this. Where did this come from?
I cannot tell you. Dennis had his hand.
Dennis?
Well, I was going to say, Sam, and I, I thought this had come up when the chief was here, that this was talked about, so.
I do remember it being talked about.
Talked about, but I, I know what you're saying, that it wasn't in there, so I'm
Well, and, and-
Thinking it was an oversight.
Mr. Colby, if you could help me out, maybe I'm reading this wrong. You just told us what the, what the fund, the balance of the fund will be, but it says the next planned vehicle expenses are for Tower III in 2021, $1.4 million. That's how it reads.
Yeah. I do know that there were two warrant articles that were brought forward, but one of them was too late, the, a proposal to replace the power truck in 2021 due to significant dam, not damage, but wear and tear on the vehicle. Unfortunately, it was a bond article that was brought recently, and there was not enough time to schedule a public hearing and go through the whole process through state law to get a bond article on. So I think the, you know, this was in addition to that to help replace as part of the CIP to start and continue the putting away money towards the larger purchases, is my understanding.
That, that I understand and I agree with, but the way, the math, it doesn't add up. If, even if this did pass, from what you said is in the balance plus this, is nowhere near $1.4 million, which is said is to be expended in 2021 on that truck.
And I think that wording needs to be changed, because I think the intent of, I believe these came from Tim Moore and Chief Knutza, and the intent was to present both of them, but as I said, with one of them not being presented and not being able to act on it, they had changed the language on the second one, anticipating both of them coming forward. But because the other one is not able to come forward, this language, my guesses would need to be changed to say that they're looking to replace the tower truck in 2022.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, this is just hypothet, you know, my, my understanding, so.
Darrell?
Thank you.
Go ahead, Darrell.
Yeah, I think this is just the case that, you know, no matter how we look at it, cut it as slices, this is a pay me now or pay me later. I mean, really, I mean, I don't like getting something at the last minute either, but, you know, no matter how much we put away, it goes away towards the, the truck that we know that we're going to need. So you either double up next year, or you triple up next year, but I think you, you have to take it as a pay me now or pay me later.
Any other discussion? We can, Lori, did you ever hand up yours?
Well, I was just going to say, I think the reason that we got this tonight was because at the end of the Board of Selectmen meeting, I actually made a phone call to the chairman and corrected her that we were having a public hearing tonight, and also that we didn't have the dollar amount for the landfill cap. And her comment to me was that we only needed to present the budget at the public hearing, and that was incorrect. We need to present the appropriations.
We're lucky. I-
Correct.
I got them this afternoon, so I'm glad we have them now. Okay, yeah, Dennis?
I guess it's a technical question, and I don't know if anybody can answer it, sort of what Pete was saying. So warrant articles are developed by the Board of Selectmen, correct, and forwarded to us. If this wasn't developed by the Board of Selectmen, where do we stand as far as approving?
Yeah, Julian?
I think what, what Mr. Heffernan is saying is correct. I'm just going to make one correction to my previous statement. It was in our packet, except we didn't go over the warrant articles, and we did not discuss it.
Okay.
So, I did have, we did have it last night in our packet, we just didn't go over them. And, tell you the truth, I don't know how this one would have gone over, so. This is one of those things you get to vote for at first. We'll have to do this Monday.
Okay. So, there's a motion to recommend, roll call vote, please?
What if we didn't vote on it?
Huh?
What if we decided that there wasn't enough information here, and it didn't go before the Board of Selectmen, and we decided not to take a vote?
We'd probably have to continue our meeting tonight and vote next week, so.
Yeah.
My recommendation is we do it tonight.
Yeah.
Yep.
We have the number in front of us, so.
Yep, yep.
Okay, yes, please take the vote.
Okay, Max Dobson.
No.
Sam Cafiso.
No.
Dennis Heffernan.
No.
Lori Mallett.
Yes.
Robert Zukas.
Yes.
Darrell Breton. Somebody let Darrell know?
Darrell, can you vote?
Yes, yes.
Peter Brachis.
No.
Bob Hamilton?
Yes.
Julian Kiska.
Abstain.
That was a yes.
Abstain.
That's an abstain.
You are abstaining.
So it's-
We didn't vote on it, I can't represent the no vote.
4-3, I believe it passed.
Four, four yeses and an abstaining.
4-3-1.
It passes?
It passed, 4-3-1.
No, 4-4-1.
No, because Julian abstained.
So there's nine, so 4-4-1.
It's 4-4-1.
Oh, it doesn't pass.
It doesn't pass.
Doesn't pass.
So-
It's, it's just a referral number on a tally, anyway.
So do we not put our, we just put 4-4-1?
Correct, correct. Correct, correct.
That's all.
Because all it does is change the wording to either recommended by or not recommended by, depending on the majority vote.
Right, so it would just be four, four, one.
When you get more facts, you may change your vote, so.
As long as we keep the hearing open. The next one is Article P 2116. We're running a little late, so I apologize to anybody that is waiting for the public hearing. Article P 2116, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 22,500 to be added to the old home day expendable trust fund previously established?
I'll make the motion that we approve, um, warrant article 21-16. Second?
Could I ask somebody to mute their mic? Okay, thank you. Discussion? This is what we discussed at budget. My only question is, it might be deceiving to people amount to be raised by new taxation because it's, I thought it was taking it out of the.
Yeah, that's not right.
This isn't worded right.
It's always by new taxation. There's no fund to take it out of.
The unassigned fund balance.
The intent was to take it out of the unassigned fund balance and deposit it into the capital reserve.
Well, that's not the way we worded it at the Board of Selectmen, and we did vote on it.
The theory was that the 22-5 has already been appropriated and is waiting to be used. It didn't get used this year, so it's going to lapse into the unreserved, unreserved.
Exactly.
Unassigned fund. So the warrant article was supposed to take the money from that fund and put it into the old home day fund. So we can guarantee money for next year, so we don't have to appropriate money for it this year.
No, that's not the way it's worded, I'm sorry.
Well, that was our intent, so I don't really know what we can do.
So Sam, what you're saying is from. We didn't use it this year, it's still in, in the expendable fund.
Right now, it's in the, well, no, this is 21, so it should've lapsed into the unreserved, unassigned fund.
It's already gone. It's in the unassigned fund now.
Right, so the warrant is to take the money from that fund this year.
Right.
And put it into the old home day, um, capital, uh, the old home day trust fund.
Right, and where this says amount to be raised by new taxation, we didn't, our intent when we brought this forward was not to say that because that sometimes deters voters.
Right, so as long as that wording can get changed.
Mm-hmm, Dennis?
We could always just change it on the floor at deliberative.
The wording?
As a budget, yeah.
Okay, all right, we'll do that just to get it done, it's a good, good suggestion, thank you.
I'll bring it up at the meeting. Yeah, I mean, it's all, it's all taxpayers' money, no matter how you word it, but.
Right, but it's not new, it's already been paid for.
Right, and the, the intent, you can't, if someone comes before you with a warrant article and explains their intent and you leave that part out, it's not what they intended. So let's take our vote and then we can change the language like Dennis suggested. Roll call, vote please.
Max Dobson?
Yes.
Sam Capiso?
Yes.
Dennis Hefferman?
Yes.
Lauren Mallett?
Yes.
Uh, Robert Zukas?
Yes.
Darrell Burton?
No.
Peter Brocchi?
Yes.
Bob Hamilton?
Yes.
Julian Kiska?
Yes.
So eight.
No, seven, one, one.
No, eight, one, zero.
Eight, one, zero, recommended.
Yeah.
Okay. The next one to go over, Article P 2117, shall the town of Plastow enter into a multi-year contract for recycling services and raise and appropriate a sum not to exceed 295,000 for the purpose of funding the first 12 months of this contract.
I'll make a motion.
Second? I'll second it. Discussion?
This is, sorry?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is over and above what we voted on for the current budget?
Correct.
Okay.
Darrell?
It's hard for me to vote on something that has no back. Uh, that, that number, I don't know where it came from, what it represents, how much it represents in time and, and effort as far as the pickup of the, the recycling. I just, that might cover one month, it might cover 14 months. I have no way of knowing that. And without that, I can't vote for something that I'm just shooting pie in the sky.
Yeah, Lori?
It also attaches to a multi-year contract that the town hasn't signed yet.
Correct.
I mean, if this, I heard that it could get amended at deliberative and if it did, I might be more apt to vote for it at that time. But it's hard to vote yes on this the way it's worded.
Yeah, we had that discussion also and along the same lines. Of course, you were watching the whole meeting, so you heard everything we said, Ms. Mallett. We were also talking about the Selectmen making a warrant article to let the people choose whether they want to do it or not. And then, but still, the problem is, we don't have a contract and an exact number. We can, we can get a good guesstimate based on previous, you know, previous bids, but it's not a guaranteed number. But then again, if you don't have an amount put in and we, and you do the recycling and the money's not there, no matter how much you want to do it, you won't be able to do it. So you're kinda caught in the middle. It's a tough one, so we had that discussion and it really, the discussion is, we, probably the Board of Selectmen wants to put their own warrant article in, but, um, so that we have something that makes more sense or is approximation of the most sense with numbers if the people want to do it. It's a hard thing to, to add that to someone's tax bill, but we cannot stop people from voting and we can't stop a citizen's petition, so.
I would just like clarification from anyone that can. If this passes, what this will do will add the $290,000 onto this year's budget? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So it, it just gets added to the bottom line of the budget?
Yes, for the purpose of, for, for the purpose of recycling.
It gets added to trash.
Whether you can use it for anything else, I don't know, you have to ask Mr., the Finance Director.
He just shook his head, yes.
Yeah. My only question is, will this, oh, yes, please.
It, I would consider it added to the bottom line of the operating budget, but because it's a special warrant article, you couldn't, it would need to only be spent on the purpose that is designated. You couldn't, you know, say, well, we have $100,000 left and we're gonna spend it out of the fire department or the police department. It, it would be contained to the recycling.
So then, my just final question on this, will this also say total appropriation amount to be raised by new taxation?
No, it's, the citizen's petition has to go on as it was received and this is exactly how it was received.
One other quick question. Could recycling cots be added to, could this money be used for that purpose as well? Because if we're going with a cot program, we're gonna need the cots for the recycling and would the money, could the money come from this?
Probably more of a legal question.
Hey?
Okay, yeah, Sam?
I'll make it quick. The only issue I have with this, too, is it says it for the purpose of funding the first 12 months, but the problem is, we have six months of JRM left.
Right.
So how are you gonna fund six months of a new contract, uh, a half, half a year of a new contract with a warrant article that's supposed to fund 12 months? I, it just, I don't know if it works legally or not.
I think we should at least give our.
We do that every single budget because the time you vote and the time the budget is always different.
Right, but.
You know, we go to December 31st, yeah, we don't vote till March, well, that's normal.
I agree, but that's meant, but the stuff we appropriate in the budget is meant to do a whole fiscal year.
Yeah, it's for one year, I don't think it would be continued, continued to the next year unless it was approved again.
This says the first 12 months of a contract, which would be July to July, I don't know, it's just too confusing. After seeing what's been going on with trash and recycling through the Board of Selectmen meetings for the last six months, I'm not touching this with a tentacle.
Yeah, I know, the Board of Selectmen has been trying to do the right thing.
I know.
Trying to keep the budget in hand.
We have a public hearing to do, we're already.
But when, when people come outside and they, they know everything, even though they haven't got the whole discussion. Could I please finish?
Well, we're running late.
It tends to cause a confusion and possibly the facts may be wrong.
Yeah, I understand, no, I, I agree. Let's take a vote.
Yeah, I'd like to just vote to recommend this. Roll call, please.
Max Dobson?
No.
Sam Capiso?
No.
Dennis Hefferman?
No.
Lauren Mallett?
No.
Robert Zukas?
No.
Darrell Burton?
No.
Peter Brocchi?
No.
Bob Hamilton?
No.
Julian Kiska?
Since we didn't discuss it, abstain.
Okay. So eight, zero, one, not to recommend, or zero, eight, however you write it.
Yeah.
Okay, any other warrant articles that we need to give our recommendation before we go into the public hearing? Lori?
I'd like to know if we could revote the Water Service Incentive Program, P 2102.
Okay. Does, does everybody mind voting, revoting?
Will you state in discussion why the, why you wanna bring it up again?
Well.
No, during discussion?
Yeah, we could just put a motion on the floor.
Mm-hmm.
So, do you wanna make a motion to?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to recommend Water Service Incentive Program, Article P 2102.
Okay.
I'll second.
So discussion, do you wanna explain?
Well, as much as it was said to me about the, um, betterment plan and it was only going to pertain to the people that use the water, to me, this is, once it's out there that, um, the Board of Selectmen are gonna adopt a betterment plan, I just see it growing legs of its own.
Okay. Yes, Bob?
I agree that the wording in this warrant article gives the Board of Selectmen the authority to create a betterment plan. It's giving them permission to do this. This reminds me of when we had a warrant article to, um, asking the voters of Plastow if we wanted a train station. And it was overwhelming that we did want a train station. That alone was used by the Board of Selectmen to go after a layover station, which most of the town didn't want. This went on for six years. A lot of time was invested, a lot of money was invested. I wouldn't want to see this happen again. That's why I'm voting no.
Yeah, Julian?
Yeah, we had this discussion about the definition of betterment in this case. And for instance, this is not a fund that can be spent for anything else except to help people pay for their water connection, so.
Then why is the word betterment in there?
You don't do this, because it's a legal term that had to be used, it was explained last night, even though I brought up the same thing. It's a scary word, but it's the word that has to be legally used, was the explanation. And in order to vote this down, you're not hurting anybody but the people who can't afford to hook up. So that's the only thing I'm gonna say about that.
I mean, I guess my question would be, why can't it just stop after the semicolon? Because what's coming after the semicolon is an afterthought. That's the definition of how you use a semicolon. It means the sentence is not finished, there's more to say.
Which sentence?
The, the last word is thereto semicolon and further to authorize the Select Board to adopt a betterment plan. That get, if you're reading the English language and you understand sentence structure, Lori is right, that's giving the Board of Selectmen the authorization to create a betterment plan. So that is scary language and it should be addressed.
All right, could I ask the town manager to explain that again, who has a legal background?
Yes. So, I've heard the, I've heard the comments and I'm not here to argue the language. It's the language that's required, it's legalese. I would, I would agree with you that sometimes legalese scares people or makes people question what the meaning is. Um, I would like things to be worded simpler, too, but unfortunately, that's the way state laws are written and that's the way warrant articles are written. But for the record, um, this plan called a betterment plan that's being referred to is simply for the people to access this particular plan, this particular program. This isn't to create a townwide plan. Uh, in fact, I talked about last night, because a question was brought up, what happens if more people wanna, wanna access this, but there isn't enough funds? And the answer is, is that we would do a, we would do a subsequent, uh, bond article knowing how many people are interested. So it's, it's gonna be a step-by-step plan and it's always gonna come before the voters, uh, the betterment plan. Even though it's for the water users, it's gonna come before the, uh, the legislative body to make a decision up or down on, on the articles.
Okay. Does that answer everybody's concerns? Yeah, okay, roll call, vote please.
Max Dobson?
No.
Sam Capiso?
No.
Dennis Hefferman?
Yes.
Lauren Mallett?
No.
Robert Zukas?
Yes.
Darrell Burton?
No.
Peter Brocchi?
No.
Bob Hamilton?
No.
Julian Kiska?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, not, Article P 2102, not recommended.
Six, three?
Two, uh, three, six, zero. Okay. Okay, any, any other warrant articles? All right, on to the public hearing, so I will open the public hearing at.
Can I just, do we have to vote the operating?
Yes.
Budget, before we do that?
Oh, okay, yep.
Bottom line, yeah.
Yeah, so we actually, that's not on this one, we just have to go off of what the total was last week. So Article P 21-3, shall the town raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by vote of the first session for the purpose set forth therein totaling Should this article be defeated, the operating budget shall be, is that the default? Should I enter in the default budget?
Yep.
Okay, so that number is.
10 million something, right?
Yeah, it's, we got it in our packet, it's, so, shall the operating, uh, shall this article be defeated, the operating budget shall be?
10, 2, 3, 7, 8, 8, 4.
That includes the water department, it would be 9,806,584.
584. Thank you, Greg.
The, yep, you're welcome.
Okay, so should this article be defeated, the operating budget shall be 9,806,584 with certain adjustments required by previous action of the town or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40:13X and XI to take up the issue of a revised budget only. Is there, yeah?
I just have a question, we made changes, recommended changes last night at the Board of Selectmen meeting, so that's not gonna be discussed at all?
Um, we can discuss it after we finish the warrant. I'll let you speak and then we gotta get into public hearing.
Yeah, because it would change the total.
I know, but this is budget committee, we don't necessarily need to revoke the budgets because the Board of Selectmen changed their total, we.
Budget committee.
You just gave me my answer.
Okay. Does someone wanna make a motion to recommend Article P 2103?
I'll make a, recommendation, recommendation that we, um, recommend Article P 21-03.
There's a second? Okay, Bob seconded it. Discussion? No, okay, I'll, roll call, please.
Max Dobson?
Yes.
Sam Capiso?
Yes.
Dennis Hefferman?
Yes.
Lauren Mallett?
Yes.
Robert Zukas?
Yes.
Darrell Burton?
Yes.
Peter Brocchi?
Yes.
Bob Hamilton?
Yes.
Julian Kiska?
Abstain.
Okay, so do you wanna, Julian, explain to me what, you wanna make a motion to change any budgets? Before a public hearing?
All right, we had.
That, I just wanna know, do you wanna make any motions to change any other budgets?
Okay, let me look at. Number. Well, the trash one, I'd make a recommendation to change the trash budget to 823,490, based on the calculations that were discussed last night at the Board of Selectmen meeting.
Is that collection?
That's the collection, yes.
Thank you.
That would be on the one labeled page 31 on the original printout.
This is the numbers, all right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we, so are you making a motion to approve the solid waste collection budget for 823?
823,490 dollars.
Is there a second?
No, no.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it for, just for the matter of discussion.
Okay, discussion?
We're gonna be here all night if we start doing this.
I know, I know, we have to get on with the, um, so, any other discussion?
Just the same reasons I gave last meeting.
Okay, all those in favor of?
We're gonna do a roll call.
Oh, sorry, roll call. All those in favor of, um, approving the solid waste budget for 823,490, please wait for roll call.
Max Dobson?
No.
Sam Capiso?
No.
Dennis Hefferman?
No.
Lauren Mallett?
No.
Robert Zukas?
No.
No.
Darrell Burton?
No.
Peter Brachi?
No.
Bob Hamilton?
No.
Julian Piska?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion fails, so we're not going to change that budget. Can I just preemptively ask everybody, do you plan on revoting any budgets based on the BOS meeting last, last night? Does anybody plan on revoting? No?
No, there's no point then.
Okay, thank you. All right, I will open the public hearing on the twenty twenty-one operating budget at seven twenty. I apologize for the lateness. See how fast we can go through this. Okay, the executive budget, last year was three hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars. This year it's three hundred and six, two hundred and ninety-seven. That's a decrease of five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. The town clerk, last year was one hundred and thirty thousand, eighty-one dollars. This year it's a hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-three, and that's a decrease of twenty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight. The elections budget last year was twenty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-two. This year is twelve thousand, ninety-five. That's a ten thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven decrease. Finance, last year was a hundred and eighty-one, five seventy-five. This year is one eighty-three, three twenty-five. That's seventeen fifty increase. Assessing, last year was three hundred and three thousand, four hundred and sixty-six. This year is a hundred and eleven, eight eighteen. That's a hundred and ninety-one thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollar decrease. The tax collector last year was forty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-seven. This year is forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy. That's a two hundred and seventy-seven dollar decrease. Legal last year was seventy-five and legal this year is seventy-five thousand, sorry. Human personnel, last year was a hu, one point eight, one million, eight hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars. This year is one million, nine hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and twenty-six, and that's a ninety-two thousand, one hundred and five dollar increase. Planning, last year was ninety-two thousand, five hundred and seven. This year is the same. Zoning, last year was three thousand, five hundred and fifty, and this year it's the same. General government buildings was two hundred and ninety-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-five last year, and this year it's the same. Cemeteries was eight thousand, five dollars last year, and this year it is eight thousand. That's a decrease of five dollars. Insurances was a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars last year. This year it's a hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and sixteen. That's an increase of fourteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-six. Last year, advertising and regional associations was twenty-five thousand, five hundred. This year it's twenty-five thousand, five hundred. It stayed the same. Last year cable was twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-four, and this year cable is thirty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-four. Conflict of interest was two hundred and fifty last year and it stayed the same. Other general government was a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars last year, and this year it's a hundred and ninety thousand, and that's a forty-five thousand dollar increase. Police and animal control officer, last year was two million, eleven thousand, one hundred and seventy-five, and this year is the same. Fire, last year was seven hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one. This year is seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-five, and that's a sixty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollar increase. Building inspection, last year was a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and six. This year is a hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one. That's a nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollar increase. Emergency management was seventeen thousand, six hundred. This year is the same. Highway, last year was eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and fourteen. This year is eight hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-six. That was a decrease of twenty-three thousand, one hundred and eighteen. Street lighting, last year was a hundred and fifteen thousand. This year is a hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred. That's a twenty-five hundred dollar increase. Solid waste collection was seven hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-six. This year is seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven. That's a forty-eight thousand, sixty-one dollar decrease. I mean, increase, sorry. Solid waste disposal was seventy-one thousand, five hundred dollars. This year is forty-six thousand, five hundred. That's a twenty-five thousand dollar decrease. Health was eighty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine last year. This year is eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventeen. That's two thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollar increase.
Do you want me to read? Can you pick your up?
Sure, yes, I, I need some water.
Uh, Health and Human Services, last year was forty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three. This year it's forty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty. That's a two hundred and twenty-seven dollar increase.
Increase?
Increase.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Uh, welfare, last year was thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. This year it's thirty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. That is a four hundred and thirty dollar decrease. Recreation, last year was two hundred and three thousand, three hundred and thirteen. This year it's a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and thirteen. That is a twenty-four thousand dollar decrease. Patriotic purposes, last year was five hundred dollars. This year it's six hundred dollars with a hundred dollar increase. Cultural, last year was twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. This year it is one dollar with a twenty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollar decrease. That's the old home day thing we just talked about. Conservation Commission, ten thousand, uh, last year was ten thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars. This year it's six thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. That is a three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollar decrease. Debt service, last year was five hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred and six dollars. This year it's five hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars. That's a decrease of fifteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars. Uh, that's it, the rest are totals. Do you want me to read? Oh, the library budget, last year was five hundred and ninety-nine, one hundred and seventy-four. This year it is five hundred and ninety-nine, one hundred and seventy-four. Uh, that is a level funded budget.
Greg, could I just also get the water budget, just to disclose that also?
The water budget, prior year versus current, the current year amount is four hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred, and then the prior year amount was, just twenty twenty, budget, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars.
Okay. Does anyone have...
What's this year's again, Max?
One fifty-seven, four forty-four.
Was last year's.
Yes, I'm sorry, you wanted this year's?
Yeah.
Four hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's disclosing the public hearing. Can, we'll speak, we'll wait for the public?
Okay, I currently have three individuals that are connected with us. I'm not seeing any questions or hand raising, but we're going to keep an eye on that. If there's anything, I will relay those comments forward.
Okay, well, now's the chance, if anybody wants to comment at the public hearing. Do we have to keep it open for a certain amount of time or, does anybody know?
Do we, are we reviewing the articles?
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to see if anybody has...
I got you.
Just one second. I have a Ryan Labrecq, who I think is trying to reach us, so I'll just put him on through and if he can ask his questions. Okay, Ryan Labrecq, if you'd like to unmute your mic or your webcam and if you'd like to speak with us. I'm not sure what his intentions are, but I'm going to put him through.
Yep.
Yes, how are you?
Hi, please state your name and your address.
Ryan Labrecq, one seventy-four Main Street.
Okay. Did you have a question about any of the budgets we disclosed?
Yeah, it's more of a general, general statement in regards to trash and recycling. You know, for recycling to be removed and put as a warrant article in lieu of carried in a budget, which effectively increases taxes, why hasn't the town reduced costs in order to absorb the additional cost of recycling or trash in that, for that matter? Given that trash and recycling affects every single resident and there's other areas of the budget that may be desired by some people, but certainly not used by most. I can think of many different options that could be reduced. Certainly, when we have issues at home that we need to pay for, we reduce spending other places in order to continue doing what we're doing. And it's unfortunate that our town decides to eliminate services and instead of looking for other ways to pay for them, especially when they affect every taxpayer in town.
Thank you, I appreciate your comment. Okay, anybody else have anything?
Can we comment on that?
I mean, yeah, we, I, we can discuss it.
The, I hear, if I hear you correctly, you're, you're saying that you're not in favor, or you feel that it is improper to be asking for two hundred and ninety-five thousand for recycling?
Is he still with us, Dean?
Who is it?
Uh, yeah, he's still with us.
Okay, so...
Brian, if you're still with us?
What I'm saying is, what I'm saying is that other areas of the budget should have been reduced to be able to absorb paying for trash and recycling, as opposed to just eliminating it, not budgeting for it, and then saying, hey, if you really want to do this, we're going to increase your taxes. Find another way to, to make the numbers work, reduce costs.
Well, my...
Reduce things that are unnecessary to the town. Trash and recycling is a necessary evil.
I can, I appreciate, I appreciate your, your comment on that. But let me explain to you that one of the reasons recycling wasn't strongly looked at was because of the fact that so few are taking part in the recycling. So for every taxpayer to be paying, or for us to have a recycling part of the trash program, most of the, a lot of the recycling that was being picked up wasn't even able to be recycled due to pizza boxes that were full of grease. There were certain things that they've gotten very fussy in what's being recycled. But not only that, very few people were using it. What was the number we had?
Seventeen percent.
Well, so that seventeen percent is just the total, seventeen percent of tonnage that was recycling. That's what that number means.
Right, okay, so seventeen percent was recyclable?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Okay, seventeen percent. So we're not fifty percent, we're not seventy-five percent. If it was, if we had some kind of number that was up at least somewhere reasonable, then I could see us looking at some kind of an element to have that be part of our trash program. But one of the things that was brought up was having a central dumpster put somewhere, wherever it's going to be, and that would be used for people that wanted to recycle. They could then throw their cardboard in one, plastic in another, whatever it happened to be. That would be an option at a, at a more reasonable cost and would allow us to still achieve the same thing, recycling, but at a fraction of a cost, especially to the taxpayers. So I think that's why we weren't looking for it in the trash part of, in the contract, because the number was so absorbent to be, to, to have it in the contract. So, and then to have the citizen coming forward, asking two hundred and ninety-six thousand for recycling, we don't even know what that's based on. So the board was not in favor of that because there's nothing to substantiate that price.
Sam?
Yeah, I just...
I, I understand where you're coming from there. Other than, you know, seventeen percent by way, whatever, there's a lot of numbers that have been flying around. I can't, I can't attest to reviewing all of them. I'm not going to speak, speak accurately about them. But I think part of the problem is there's a lot of misinformation. There's not a lot of, I think the data needs to be just presented by the town to the townspeople with, here's what it is. But regardless of all that, by your logic, it's more than seventeen percent of people in town that are, that are recycling. It's seventeen percent of the tonnage. Whatever the number is, there are plenty of different programs within the town that less people use. I never go to the library. I'm not saying it's a bad thing. I never participate in recreation things. I never have gone to Old Home Day. Most of the time it's because I haven't been here physically. But, and again, I'm not disparaging those programs, but everybody has trash and everybody has recycling and at, even if it's thirty percent of people in town that use it, I guarantee you that thirty percent is more than the amount of people that use some of these other programs that are costing several hundred thousands of dollars across the board. So from my perspective, other things that are discretionary should be reduced significantly to be able to absorb the additional cost for something that potentially, certainly potentially, everybody in town could participate in, or at least a high percentage of people do participate in.
So I...
I think that seventeen, that number is completely misleading.
I'd just like to explain to you, I don't know how long you've been involved in town politics, but this Budget Committee as a whole follows that philosophy, you know? We need to budget for the meat and potatoes, and then we have a lot of other services that we consider dessert. And we've tried to budget accordingly. But what happens at the polls is the people that show up that want those services are the ones that are voting and they don't necessarily agree with our philosophy. And the budget becomes a number that is really hard to swallow, especially when you have critical services like trash and recycling being jeopardized.
Absolutely, I'm not, not at all. I admittedly am just getting a little bit involved now because, again, I've been kind of absentee for a while. And I obviously appreciate the fact that you guys are looking after the numbers. And I know this is a larger conversation that includes many more than, than everyone on the call tonight and everyone in the room tonight. But I just have a fundamental issue with, you know, services that are existing. So my taxes, everyone's taxes, have been going skyrocketing over the last seven, eight years. You know, every year, every year and a half, every couple of years, several hundreds of dollars going up. And town services are going down, or essential town services are going down now to make room for things that really are, are wants and desires and not needs. Trash is obviously a need, regardless if it's, if it's recycled. Yes, there's a cost associated to that. There's also a cost to throw it away. And I am on your side in the sense that I don't like any spending. I'd actually be an advocate for just abolishing trash and recycling altogether, and I'll go find a contractor and do it myself if my taxes came down. I have no confidence my taxes would come down, so I'm not going to agree to that, but, anyway, that's...
Dennis has something to add?
So first of all, I'd like to thank you for participating. It's good to have people participate and ask questions. I've been on this committee for seven years and I don't think we've ever had anybody come forward, so I'm glad to see that. You're right, there are a lot of areas, it makes it difficult, and what do you cut? And what don't you cut? And who uses what services and that. Fortunately, a lot of us don't use the police department, don't use the fire department, but they're all essential services that make up the town. The other thing is, when you look at your taxes, another major portion of your taxes is also the schools. So that's another area that people need to look at and get involved with and speak up on that area also. So those are my comments.
Julian?
Yeah, I, I'd like to thank you for speaking up and I, I, hopefully there's a lot more people with the common sense that you said because everything you said was absolutely correct. There are a lot of services that are, well, police and fire are necessities because they're, they're a matter of, they could be a matter of life or death. But there are other things that I saw, most of the people I know in town don't use those other services that you talked about. And I understand where you're coming from, but it's a matter of how does it get done and can you get the votes?
Uh, Brian, yeah, we talked about taxes several years ago, but what I want to say is that every one of these services that you're talking about has a lobbyist. It has a group that likes it. And they bring people to the deliberative session and they get past what they want to get past. If you have a problem with the recycling, then you'll have to get a group to go to the deliberative session to not have recycling. Like I say, the people who like these programs have, have a, let's say, an N, a lobbyist, and they make... and they make recommendations and plead for their case, and it's usually taken. And that's why those other things go up. And stuff like you're talking about, the people don't have a lobbyist, they go down, or whatever like that. That's what I'm, okay.
Yeah.
And I understand that, it's just that how did we come to the point where we decided that recycling was less important than having concerts at the park? Or recreation in general? Or paying for a town annex with three people in it, et cetera? That's where I have a fundamental issue. I don't want more spending. Going to deliberative session to get recycling added means that it's a warrant article that's going to be added to my tax bill. So my taxes are going to go up again. They've been going up every two years. I've been not getting, I've not been getting any additional services. And then the service that I use, several hundred and probably several thousand people in town use, is being eliminated. Someone decided that that's less important than something else, and that is concerning.
So...
Good point.
Yeah, that, those are all good points, and I'd just like to reiterate. We aren't, as a budget committee, we have an idea of what we deem essential services, and we don't want to lose. But really, it is up to the taxpayer to tell their elected officials, you know? We demand these services, we don't want to see them decrease. Last year, the town manager and the police chief were faced with, you know, lowering their budget but increasing the service, and I believe that they were able to do that. We ask that of every department, and we don't necessarily get that kind of result. So we definitely agree with you, and we appreciate this, and we need more people like you involved. Julian?
Yeah, I kind of, I agree with you, what you're saying. But the only statement you're making is if it's a warrant article, it makes your taxes go up. Well, if we just, if it's just added into the budget, it raises it the same amount. So it's either the warrant article where people choose that they want it, or it's put in and you're forced to pay it. But either way, you pay for it. So I just wanted to make that clear. Just because it's a warrant article doesn't make your taxes go up anymore. It just means you got, you're given the choices of voter, whether you want it or not.
Yep, okay.
It's just a fundamental disconnect that I have in that.
I don't think you're alone, Dennis.
It's a plus minus in a budget, just like a home budget. And, you know, it shouldn't be assumed that taxes should go up. We should hold taxes steady, and we should spend to that amount at most. And we should look to constantly reduce and not constantly add. And it seems like we try to constantly add. And I know some of that is voted related.
I just make a point...
One second, Julian, I just want to find out, Dean, is anybody else waiting to speak at public hearing?
I have two individuals connected, but they have not indicated any...
Questions?
Hand questions, but I am...
Okay, so just keep an eye on it, okay.
Yeah, I just want to make one point. What you're saying is, or something Peter Brocchi had mentioned earlier. The lobbyists, I guess you want to, if you want to call them that in our town, are always lobbying to increase the taxes or add money to their cause or something they like. But we've never had any real group that comes in and say, we're trying to reduce the budget. So maybe that's something that needs to happen in this town, but I have not seen it yet, unfortunately. So the, the budget committee, including the Board of Selectmen, are really paddling upstream in trying to control the taxes. And I know a lot of people are hurting, especially this year. People, they're laid off, they're furloughed, they're a lot of, we're getting a more aged community. They're now on social security, and they're going, living off their savings. And they're trying to get, still trying to get their kids through school and all those other things that have to happen. They have to put food on the table, they have to, you know, make sure their kids can go to school, they have clothes. There's a lot of things. And we, this committee, this board, this budget committee, as well as the Board of Selectmen, are trying to do things to bring it down. And then every time they try to bring it down, they get, I don't know, beat up by the people that really want the things raised. So it is, it is a battle. And people are trying, trust me. And if you really want to get involved, please get involved.
I think there's someone else that wants to speak at public hearing.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a Peter Bolio who has raised his hand. I'm going to put him on as a panelist, and he can speak up whenever he would like.
Please state your name and address.
He hasn't unmuted yet. Mr. Bolio, if you are connected and you'd like to speak, you are welcome to unmute your mic. I don't know if he's interested. That's... I'm not seeing any other connections.
Okay, I'm just going to move forward with going over the warrants now. Do we have to read them all again and then give our recommendation?
He's, he just unmuted, so he might be...
Sorry.
Please state...
All right, are you able to hear me now? Sorry about that.
Please state your name and address.
Sure, my name's Peter Bolio, 3 Suzanne Circle. My question really is just to the previous speaker, previous person dialing in. How did we actually get here? The body, is the, is the budget committee the one that came up with removing the line item for recycling? Or is that a decision made by the selectmen or a different body?
I can speak to it from the budget committee point of view. Our contract with our current trash contractor, JRM, is running out in six months, and it's time to enter a new contract. And that burden fell on the shoulders of the BOS. And I imagine that they considered removing recycling to avoid a huge budget.
Yeah, I'll just try to keep it simple. We went out to bid, we got bids, and because of the trash recycling market had changed over a few years, we were lucky, we had a five-year contract at one point, and a lot of other towns are nearing the end of their contracts. And this year, the, the budget came in, and the recycling was huge, because they don't have a market for it. So they charging basically to pick up that extra recycling that they really don't get anything for. So they're, they're adding it to the contract. And it was a huge difference between doing with recycle or without recycling. And trying to get the budget down, that was a choice we were willing to make. And still, we all were advocates of recycling, so it's a tough decision. So we were looking into other options of recycling other than picking it all up at the door with the current bids. Now, we're trying to go out there, maybe get bids from a professional recycling company that may want to come in, or maybe possibly people who want to recycle can take the savings on their taxes and use that. We're, we're open to suggestions.
Was it over a million with recycling, if we included recycling?
It was a difference of almost $200,000 plus, you know?
Plus the 823, so that would be over a million.
There's a lot of factors. It became a factor, can the taxpayer absorb that kind of increase? And that, that's what really happened. This, this committee did make that decision, even though they're, and essentially in one way, supporting it because it reduces the budget. But it was the Board of Selectmen that says, we have no, we have no choice. We're trying to keep our word and our promise to the taxpayer that we, we're not going to let the taxes go through the roof. But then again, the people, if they really want to pay for it, and they really want to do it, then we'll, that's what will happen. The people still rule in the end, so...
Thank you for that comment. That is my understanding, that basically worldwide, the demand for recycled materials is down, therefore, it's not as lucrative a business as it used to be, and the costs are being passed on. That I, that I do understand. I was listening in last night's meeting, and I heard some of the discussions. This is literally, I literally found out that my recycling was going to end in July, last Thursday night. I'm not on Facebook. I have, it was mentioned that there was a townwide survey done, and that a very small percentage of people actually responded that they used, used recycling. I, I didn't, I never got that survey, that's for sure. I later understand, there were comments last night, there was a survey made on Facebook. I just, the decision, again, to the previous speaker's points. The decision that it apparently was being viewed as a non-essential or not widely-used service by town residents, I can't for the life of me understand what that, what that conclusion was based on.
Can I try?
You can try.
I'm trying to watch it. You're more in tune to it than I am, so correct me if I'm not correct. But I believe it was made on the basis that that seventeen percent number is not a participation number. It's a percentage of the overall items that are removed from this town. Out of all that stuff they took, whether it be trash and/or recycling, only seventeen percent of that was recyclable material. And of that, it's even gone down since then. I believe the latest number was ten or eleven percent.
Well, then some of that is then rejected and...
As it gets rejected. So I believe, and I'm not on that board, so I can't speak for that board, but I believe the rationale was, why pay three hundred, almost $300,000 for a service that we're only getting seventeen percent turnover, or being used seventeen percent as being used? I believe, is that correct, Julian, that's general...
Yeah, the thing is, the way you say it, it's, when it doesn't recycle, it adds to the tonnage of the regular trash. And when you go over a certain amount of tonnage, they then charge you even extra. And that's what, that's what's happening right now.
Okay, I don't, I don't wish to be redone or drag you along, but I'll, one, one other question, and this is a simple, simple question, I think. Does, do the representatives of the town that were involved in removing recycling from this year's budget believe they have an accurate accounting of what percentage of residents use recycling?
We can only go by the weight. When everything gets, we're off to the recycling centers or the, the landfills, all, the truck, the weight, the trash is weighed, so it goes strictly by, you can't go by how many people do it or how many don't. I'm sure most of the residential homeowners do it. Everyone on my street does it, I do it. I'm, I'm in recycling, I'm into recycling. I think it's the right thing to do. But is it the right thing to have everybody pay for something that, for some reason, we don't do very well in this town? And I proposed a new committee to study the problem, how can we get people to do it better? If more people did it better, then it may be worth it. It's, it's one of those things. It's, it's, it's an important thing to do, but it's not, it's not... The essential service is that people don't have trash building up on their front lawns. Trash must be removed. Now, how much of it's recycled or not? Yes, it's, it's better for the environment, whatever, yes, to have recycling, to reuse materials. It just makes sense, and there's less going to a landfill. But unfortunately, something has to happen to get the cost down. Either higher usage, because if you get higher recycling usage, you bring down the tonnage of the trash that goes to the landfill, which reduces the cost on that side. So it's one of those, you can't have one without the other. It's a really difficult subject, sorry.
No, I, I agree with you, Julian.
All right, thank you, thank you for listening to my thoughts.
Yeah, and I agree that if you drive around town on trash day, nine out of 10 people have recycle buckets out. I, I don't understand how that number can be that either.
But we also never enforced recycling at group communities like condominiums and apartments. Some, I know, I talked to one lady, because I do call people back, and she says, yeah, in their apartments, like somewhere on Forest, 4th Street, that they put out, she says they put out four bins for recycle over a two-week period. It gets filled up right away, and so all the rest of the trash, all the rest of the recycle just goes in the trash. So, and then other, other places that have a lot of residents, because that's a lot of units, don't recycle at all. But we've never enforced in this town that they must do recycling. I'd be all for that, because I think everybody should participate. And then it would be a program that's worth paying for, because it would reduce the tonnage going to the landfill, which would reduce the cost on one end, even though they're not making a lot on the other end. It would really change the contract, because they base that on the tonnage.
Also, you know, in reference to that, Julian, I think along with trying to get a program going and to, you know, get more people on board, it's also teaching people what is recyclable. Because if you're talking, all this stuff, you know, everybody's recycling, but only 11% of it is usable, well, that's, that's, that's the problem right there. That's the problem. If, if you're, if everybody's recycling and 75% of it is usable, then you know whatever people are recycling is the proper stuff to recycle. And I think that education is a big part of it also, because, like you said, anything that isn't being recycled, if I recycle, I have, the town has 20 tons of whatever, of recycling, but only two percent, you know, 11% of that is usable. Well, we're now going to pay for the other percentage that is being added to our tonnage of trash.
Correct.
So now we're paying double for that same trash that would have normally been, you know...
That's referred, that overage is returned as a tipping fee.
That's right, exactly.
So many dollars per ton of tipping fee.
So education, I think, is a big part of this.
It is, very big.
To make this recycling work.
We could talk about trash.
Yeah, I, we...
Yeah, it's, I, I think there are solutions, and I really wanted to have an option. I mean, even though we, we didn't have a contract with trash, for recycle, I would like to have seen a line item in that budget, and I can't really propose it because the Board of Selectmen didn't want to put it. But personally, I was saying, if, if we had the option to have an amount for recycling only, and then if we can get a good deal, or if we can get a good contract, it would not tie the hands of the selectmen to get a contract. Because right now, if you don't have the money there, even if we get a good deal, we can't execute it, because the money's not there. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, so we also...
We want to do the right thing, but if you tie your hands, you can't do it. Then that means another year.
Can I just make a quick point?
Well, I just, we haven't even, we haven't even given the warrant articles and presented them. So this is the, this is in reference to the citizens' petition. We can revisit that when we're discussing that in the public hearing.
I agree with you, we don't need to talk about it anymore, but this is, this has come out as a, it woke people up. Because people, you were on the trash committee, nobody was, everyone was ignoring it, nobody cared. Now that it's an issue, maybe people will start looking at it and say, yeah, I'm doing it right or wrong. What can I do? It's good to get, more people are going to get involved and excited. There could be a good outcome here. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay, let's see who else wants to speak at public hearing.
One of our previous participants, looks like he's chatted some questions. Do you want me to have him come back on?
Is there a new one? We can have him come back.
There's another, there's a third individual has not indicated any, any comment, but one of our previous commenter has some questions.
Okay, I just ask, is it, is it a new subject? Because we will revisit this when we present the citizens' petition.
Okay, yeah, it's in regards to, I'll just relay the text. He wanted to ask, why did JRM not bid the proposal? And how much, oh, he says, can wait for the citizens'.
Petition, okay. All right, so at this part of the public hearing, we're going to present the warrant articles. But I was actually, I have one bit of housekeeping, because apparently, we put the, we tabled our recommendation on the Salt Shed Solar Panel Project. We tabled that for new information. I don't think there was new information, so we can just take a vote to recommend it.
What article was that?
It was P 2106, Salt Shed Solar Panel Project, Phase Two. I missed it in my notes that we had tabled it for more information.
Why? Did you make a note why we tabled it?
I think it had to do with the encumbrance.
Yeah, it had to do with the encumbrances.
They now have said that they don't have to encumber the funds, because the warrant was non-lapsing.
That's correct.
So that's the information we got, so we're ready to recommend this. Does someone want to make a motion to recommend the Salt Shed Solar Panel?
I'll make that motion that we recommend Article P 21-06.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Discussion? So, yeah, I think what Lori said, we were waiting to see how the encumbrances worked out, and the BOS encumbered those funds. So...
And what was the, what was the result?
That...
They didn't have to encumber them.
Did not have to encumber them.
Because the warrant article was non-lapsing.
Okay, so a call to recommend?
Okay, Max Dobson?
No.
Sam Caffiso?
No.
Dennis Heppernan?
Yes.
Laura Millet?
No.
No.
Robert Zukas.
Yes.
Darrell Britton.
Darrell, do you have a recommendation, yes or no?
Yes.
Peter Protschke.
No.
Al Hamilton.
No.
Julian Kista.
Let me clarify here, because the twenty, the numbers got mixed, changed on some things.
Okay.
Twenty-one oh six is contingency fund, is that correct?
Um, I'm going off of what we printed out, the voter's guide.
Because my twenty-one oh six is contingency fund.
We've only gotten one version of this.
Yeah, I only have one, this one version, so if you have a newer copy, I'm, they must have all different numbers.
January seventh, let me look at my previous one.
This one was dated December twenty-second, so you have.
Let's go by the name. What's the name?
Okay.
I want to be sure.
Salt Shed Solar Panel Project Phase Two.
Okay, it's twenty-one oh seven on mine.
Okay.
Um, that vote would, for me, would be yes.
Yes, so it's five, four, zero.
That was your vote, for short.
Okay.
Yes.
So, five, four, zero.
Can I make one recommendation?
Um.
The problem we've had Board of Selectmen in previous years, since the numbers sometimes get messed up on different copies, we always, we always in the motion put the title of it, so that it's clear.
Okay.
Because the number can change in a couple weeks, and if you go back to a previous minute, it's the wrong article.
So, are you suggesting not to present the article number, and just do the title?
Well, at least put the title in, so it's clear for the minutes.
Okay.
So it doesn't become confusing if the number changes.
Okay, all right, so I'm gonna go off of the December twenty-second copy, if that's okay with you.
Okay, I can do that.
Um, okay.
But if you had the name, it wouldn't make any difference.
Okay, I just want you to know where to look.
That's the only one?
This is the only, that was the only one we had to take care of, so now I would like to present these warrant articles that have monetary amounts to them.
Do you want us all to read them?
Yeah, does everybody else have the tallies written down? Because I.
I do.
Okay, I mean, we can take turns.
Yeah, just trying to make things easier for you.
Thank you. I'll present the first one, Article P twenty-one dash oh two, Water Service Incentive Program. Oh, um, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate four hundred fifty thousand dollars gross budget, as may be needed for establishing an interim fund to provide an assistance program to abutting properties, to help incent, incentivize connection to the potable water system by providing zero or low-interest loans to the property owners to cover the capital costs needed for fees, installation, and other associated costs, so they may connect to the potable water system, to further authorize the issuance of not more than four hundred fifty thousand dollars of bonds and notes, in accordance with the provision of the Municipal Finance Act, RSA thirty-three colon one, um, and to authorize the select board to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes, to determine the rate of interest thereon, and the maturity, and other terms thereof, and to take any other action the board deems appropriate, to effectuate the sale and/or issuance of said bonds, and further to authorize the select board, as applicable to apply for, obtain and accept federal, state, or other aid grants or other funds, if any of which may be available for said work, that may reduce the amount to be financed with bonds or notes, and to, to, and to participate in the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, RSA four eighty-six colon fourteen, established for this purpose and/or the Drinking Water and Groundwater Trust Fund, and to allow the select board, as applicable, to expend such monies as they become available, and pass any vote relating thereto, colon, and further to authorize the select board to adopt a betterment plan whereby the costs of the improvements to any privately-owned service lines or infrastructure will be assessed to and reimbursed by the owners of those water lines and infrastructure that are specifically benefited by such improvements, such that the intent is the cost of the program will be paid by the users through betterments and/or user fees. The Budget Committee did not recommend three, six, zero. The next article, P twenty-one oh three, Operating Budget General Fund. Shall the town raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant, or as amended by vote of the first session, for the purpose set forth therein totaling nine million seven hundred and eighteen thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars. Should this article be defeated, the operating budget shall be nine million eight hundred and six thousand five hundred and eighty-four. With certain adjustments required by previous action of the town, or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA forty colon thirteen X and XI to take up the issue of a revised budget only. And that article was recommended eight, one, zero.
I'll read one, if you want.
Yeah, do you have the tallies?
Let me read the next one, I think I have this tally, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I believe. Um, uh, Operating Budget Water Department, Article P twenty-one oh four, which may or may not be the correct number. Shall the town raise and appropriate an operating budget for the water department, not including appropriations by special warrant and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant, or as amended by the vote of the first session, for the purpose set forth therein totaling four hundred and thirty-one thousand three hundred dollars. Should this article be defeated, the operating budget shall be four hundred and thirty-one thousand three hundred dollars. With certain adjustments required by previous action of the town or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting, meeting in accordance with RSA forty thirteen XXI to take up the issue of a revised budget only. Majority vote required, passed unanimously, recommended by the Budget Committee, nine, zero, zero.
I take the next one?
Yes, please.
Contingency Fund, Article P twenty-one dash oh five. So, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate eighty thousand for unanticipated expenses that may arise during the course of the twenty-twenty-one fiscal year? Any appropriation left in the contingency fund at the end of the year will lapse to the general fund, unassigned fund balance. Majority vote is required. Total appropriation, eighty thousand. Withdrawal from general fund, unassigned balance, eighty thousand. No amount to be raised by new taxation. Did not pass, Budget Committee, three, six, zero.
I'll go, if you want, or are you gonna raise another one, Dennis?
I'm, I'll, I'll do the Salt Shed, that's fine. All right. Salt Shed Solar Panel Project Phase Two. So, shall the town, sorry, let me start again. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate fifty-five thousand needed to fund the Phase Two of the Salt Shed Solar Project? The funds will be withdrawn from the general fund, unassigned fund balance, and the Energy Capital Reserve Fund previously established. Majority vote is required. Total appropriation is fifty-five thousand. Withdrawal from the general fund, unassigned fund balance, fifteen thousand, and the amount withdrawn from the Energy Capital Reserve, forty thousand. No amount to be raised by new taxation. Budget Committee voted in favor, five to four.
Is that right?
No, I think it was not recommended, so it was four, five, zero.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Budget Committee did not vote in favor, four, five, zero.
Um, I'll read, I'll read the next one.
Okay.
Um, okay, sorry, solar panel, so.
Firefighter?
Yep. Twenty-four hour coverage for EMT firefighters and hazard response personnel. Article P twenty-one seven. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of a hundred and thirty-four thousand to be added to the Fire Department Annual Operating Budget to fund twenty-four-seven three sixty-five hour coverage for calls of service for pre-hospital emergency medical care, fire suppression, and rescue services. This amount will be included in the operating budget, starting in twenty-twenty-one. Majority vote required. Total appropriation, a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, and that was recommended by the Budget Committee, eight, one, zero. Create and deposit to Revaluation Capital Reserve Fund. Article P twenty-one eight. Shall the town authorize to the establishment of a capital reserve fund to meet our constitutional and statutory requirement that assessments are at full and true value, at least as often as every fifth year? Furthermore, to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-five thousand towards this purpose, and to appoint the Selectmen as agents to expend from the fund. It is anticipated that a revaluation will take place in twenty-twenty-six. Majority vote required. Total appropriation, thirty-five thousand dollars. This warrant article was not recommended by the Budget Committee, and that was one, eight, zero. Capital Reserve Fund Deposit for Energy. Article P twenty-one nine. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifteen thousand to be deposited into the existing Energy Capital Reserve Fund? Total appropriation, fifteen thousand. That was recommended by the Budget Committee, five, four, zero. Create and deposit to Information Technology Infrastructure Fund. Article P twenty-one ten. Shall the town vote to establish an Information Technology Capital Reserve Fund under the provisions of RSA thirty-five colon one, for the purpose of funding major infrastructure for all of the town's computerized systems as needed in the future, and to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand to be placed in this fund? Further, to name the Board of Selectmen as agents to expend from said fund? That was not recommended by the Budget Committee, at four, five, zero. Um, let's see what else. This number's on the new warrant article page we got tonight. And, do you want to read it? Do you have the tally on that?
Number eleven, read the updated one?
Yep.
Funding for repair and construction to fix the cap of the Plastow landfill. Article P twenty-one eleven. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to fund, one, the work of the Plastow landfill closure to comply with DES regulations, two, the construction, engineering, and permit oversight, three, construction contingencies, four, removal of old salt shed. Well, then it says three again, but I assume it means five. Tire removal, in that, in those quotes, I think there's a misprint there.
Yeah.
The funds will be withdrawn from the general fund, unassigned fund balance. This special warrant article will be a non-lapsing appropriation per RSA thirty-seven colon seven VI, and will not lapse until the completion of the landfill cap repair and construction is completed by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, whichever is sooner. Majority vote required. Total appropriations of five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which will be withdrawn from the general fund, unassigned fund balance, with no amount to be raised by new taxation. This article was not recommended by the Budget Committee, but a vote of one, eight, zero. Uh, what's the next one? Is on the old page or the new page? Twelve?
Yep, P twenty-one twelve.
I can read that if you want, the SCBA?
Yep.
Uh, Transfer to Capital Reserve Fund Self-Content Breathing Apparatus. Article P twenty-one twelve. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate twenty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars to be deposited into the existing Fire Department SCBA Capital Reserve Fund? The funds will be withdrawn from the Capital Reserve Fund, unassigned fund balance. Furthermore, name the Board of Selectmen as agents to expend from the Fire Department SCBA Capital Reserve Fund. Majority vote is required. It was a unanimous vote, excuse me, total appropriations, twenty-two thousand dollars, withdrawn from the, their general fund, unassigned fund balance, twenty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars, no amount to be raised by new taxation, and it passed unanimous, unanimous nine, zero, zero vote.
Do you want to read the next one, Dennis?
Sure. Uh, Transfer to Fire Department Radio Capital Reserve Fund. Article twenty-one dash thirteen. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of a hundred thousand to be deposited into the existing Fire Department Radio Capital Reserve Fund, under the provisions of RSA thirty-five semi-colon one, for the purpose of replacement of mobile and portable radios, as needed in the future? The funds will be withdrawn from the general fund, unassigned fund balance. Majority vote is required. Total appropriation is a hundred thousand. Withdrawal from the general fund, unassigned fund balance, a hundred thousand. No amount to be raised by taxes. Favorable vote, nine, zero, zero, by the Budget Committee. I'll do the next.
Okay, thank you.
Article Capital Reserve Fund Deposit Recreation. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty thousand to be deposited into the existing Recreation Plan Capital Reserve Fund? Twenty-five thousand in funds to be withdrawn from the general fund, unassigned fund balance. Majority vote required. Total appropriation, fifty thousand. Amount withdrawn from the general fund, unassigned fund balance, twenty-five thousand. Amount to be raised by taxes, twenty-five thousand. Not recommended by the Budget Committee, one, eight, zero.
Is there, the next one's fifteen on the other page?
Yes.
You want to read that, you want me to?
Yeah, I can read it.
Okay.
Um, Deposit into the Apparatus Capital Reserve Fund. Article P twenty-one fifteen. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of a hundred and forty thousand dollars to be added to the existing Fire Department Apparatus Capital Reserve Fund? Furthermore, name the Board of Selectmen as agents to expend from the Fire Department Apparatus Capital Reserve Fund. Majority vote required. Total appropriation, a hundred and forty thousand. Amount to be raised by new taxation, a hundred and forty thousand. That was recommended, the tally is four, four, one. The next one is the Expendable Trust Fund Old Home Day. Article P twenty-one sixteen. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-two thousand five hundred to be added to the Old Home Day Expendable Trust Fund previously established? Majority vote required. Total appropriation, twenty-two thousand five hundred. This is where this committee was hoping the language would be changed at deliberative, instead of it saying amount to be raised by new taxation, it should say, um, what's the language of, amount to be taken?
Yeah, on the previous.
I just want to copy the language.
Um, I think you have to read it, though, as it's written here.
Read it as it's written, okay.
But we wanted to say withdrawn.
Yeah, so, amount to be raised by new taxation, twenty-two thousand five hundred, but I just want to present to the people, um, this committee's intention was that this was to be taken out of the unassigned fund balance, so there would be no new taxation. And, Article P twenty-one seventeen, Citizens' Petition for Recycle Pickup. Should the town of Plastow, oh, did I give the tally on that one? Eight, one, zero, for the, for the trust fund, on Old Home Day. Citizens' Petition for Recycle Pickup. Article P twenty-one seventeen. Shall the town of Plastow enter into a multi-year contract for recycling services and raise and appropriate a sum not to exceed two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, for the purposes of funding the first twelve months of this contract? Not recommended by the Budget Committee, eight, zero, one. And that's, I believe, all of, no.
What you mean, one, eight, zero, one?
Oh.
Yes.
Yes.
Zero, eight, one.
Zero, eight, one, thank you, Pete. Not recommended. Is that all of them, I think?
I think that's where Mr. LeBrec wanted to speak up on.
Yep, so he can continue to speak at public hearing if he likes. He can go ahead.
Okay. He's coming on.
Can you?
All right, thank you.
Can you just restate your name for the minute taker?
Sure, Ryan LeBrec, one seventy-four Main Street.
Thank you.
I have, am I allowed to ask questions across the board to any of those articles, or just the trash?
Can you repeat that? I didn't hear.
I want to know if he can, does he have to ask just the trash, about the trash, or any of the articles?
Oh, no, you can ask about any articles that we discussed.
Okay. So, the first question is in regards to trash. Again, I'm kind of, I'm, I'm coming in this late in the game, admittedly, but I thought it was peculiar that JRM apparently didn't bid the trash proposal. Does anybody know why that's the case?
Go ahead, Julian.
They did bid the first time, they were on the high side, they did not bid the second time. They chose. They chose, they chose not to do the second bid. So that's, you'd have to ask JRM why.
What was the difference between first and second? What changed?
Was the bid proposal the same both times? I was wondering why they didn't bid the second time? Probably because nothing changed if it didn't.
Well, they probably weren't willing to come down. The other, the other bidders underbid them already, so they probably weren't willing to come down that low.
So the bid was the same both times? I believe that's.
Well, JRM didn't bid the second time.
No, I'm sorry, the bid proposal.
Wasn't the RFP changed a little bit the second time? Like more focused?
It was more focused the second time. But it's still, it's still, the trash part was way higher, so they would have had to bring theirs quite a bit down. So I'm just seeing that they did, they probably decided they weren't going to bid that low.
I think he may be looking for like what specifics in the proposal changed, but that's not really under this purview of this board. You can find the minutes though where the Board of Selectmen discussed the original RFP proposals, but it's in a water meeting, so you're going to have to go to the website. And instead of Board of Selectmen meeting, you'll have to click on water meeting and find the discussion of the trash RFPs under that meeting.
Okay, and the second question regards to trash is, is it seems that someone decided that fancy cart pickup was more appropriate. Do we know the difference between just having guys load trucks like JRM does now versus the cart program? And is the cart saving money or costing money?
I can speak a little to that because I was on the track. I was actually the chair when all of this was happening. And we did research several different options in town to come up with a plan that was suitable for everybody. We entertained pay as you throw. We looked at JRM as far as we were paying for a truck to come do recycling every other week, and that truck alone cost us $45,000 a month. So we decided to recommend a cart program because the idea behind it is they have less people on the truck and that savings should somehow reflect in the new contract. We did look at other towns who use Casella's cart program and they were paying somewhere in the $600,000 ballpark. And that was only two years ago and we know recycling has been an issue for over two years. So as a committee, we suggested and recommended the cart program. So the Board of Selectmen is, uses the track as an advisory committee and the ultimate decision is on them to choose what program they want to use.
Mr. LeBrec, I believe I can maybe give a little insight to that. I know people in the trash business and I think you're going to find that it's the workforce. The trash companies are getting away from the extra man on the back of the truck for, for insurance reasons. It's costing them crazy amounts of money to have these guys running behind the trucks and lifting barrels all day. And it's just cheaper for them to buy the truck with the arm on the front and they can send one guy out and do it, just, just like every other labor industry in the country. There's just less and less of workforce for people to do that kind of work.
Did that answer?
Okay, I was just speculating, but I wasn't sure if maybe JRM dropped because maybe they don't have that equipment or their pricing was much higher because they'd have to buy a truck whereas the other companies wouldn't. But anyway, that's all just speculation anyway. I'll try and go back and read the meeting.
Yeah, I'll just say, when I mentioned during the first round, people did mention they needed to know way ahead of time because they would have had to purchase some new equipment to cover our town as well, because they already dedicated their trucks to other communities. And one of them even said that we would have had to, they would have had to rent equipment, rent some trucks until they got theirs when they, to purchase them because they don't get them right away. So yeah, they had some, to go to a new community, they would have to buy new equipment and that could have also been a factor as well.
Do you have any other questions?
Sure, yeah, on the Water Connections article, um, just a general comment, why does the town need to be involved in personal finance? I don't think it's necessary. Currently, if someone loses their well, there's no town program in place to help them pay for a replacement well. I don't know why this would be any different. You know, I under, I understand the intent is to not cost the taxpayers money. Who's going to administer the program? Who's going to go after the bond? Who's going to make sure the billing is correct? There is a cost associated with that that won't all be passed on to the individual. Not only that, I think that the program can get out of hand because if it is a low interest, no interest, I don't think it's going to be based on, unless it's strictly based on some sort of need. You know, as a homeowner, we're in a, we're in a borrow-it credit society. People will just say, yeah, why, why spend four grand if I can get a loan through the town at, at the low percentage rate? Extrapolate it out, maybe I'm planning on selling my house in three years and I'll leave it to someone else to deal with when I sell the house. That way I don't have to pay it out of my current budget. So I just don't think our town should be in the business of personal finance.
Go ahead, Julian.
Well, it's not really, we're not really giving people a loan and it's not paid for by the taxpayers. It's basically a ability to give them a loan, a low-interest loan, that is applied to their water bill. So they're going to pay the principal and the interest as appropriate, and they should. It just allows them not to have to put up, if they can't afford to put $10,000 upfront to get connected and they have bad water. And we do need a certain number of users to start at the beginning in order to make the water successful, because if you don't have the circulation and the pipes and the lines, it's not, you're going to have stale water. Then they have to start spending money on water to flush and that wouldn't be good either. But the, it's not, it's paid by the users. We're not, we're not ending up being a financing company. It's an incentive program. It doesn't mean it's going to go forward for all perpetuity, but since it's a brand-new potable water system, we have to get some users online and we can't fully afford to lose those users who can't afford the $10,000 upfront to put a pipe down to their house from the water line. And I understand your concern and yes, I don't want to get into the loan business and the town has never wanted to get into the renting of property business and we've made decisions in the past that we don't want to buy, own a piece of property and repossess people's houses and getting to the renting business because that's not what the town is. Any labor or management of personnel to manage the program is billed, their time is billed to the Water Department Fund, not the regular town. So if a employee has to do something to help out of the town manager, that portion of his time will be billed to the Water Fund, which is funded by the water users. So it's not, I understand, that's how we do not pass the cost on to the regular taxpayer. That's why there's a separate enterprise fund for that and it includes the labor and time involved and anybody that has to do any work related to it. I hope that answers your question.
I think the key word here is this is a water service incentive program. It's showing, it's offering this ability so it gets more users involved. I think that our Budget Committee vote, which voted not in favor, not in, not recommendation, like no recommendation, or it was 3-6-0, I think the majority of this board shares your concerns and that's why we voted the way that we did.
And I just want to make one comment if I can. It's going to be a tragedy if we have people that can't hook up because they can't upfront the money upfront. And it's not, it's not going to hurt any of the other taxpayers that don't use water because it's not going to be billed on their tax bill. This only allowed the town, this vote only allows the town to legally allow it. And the fund money could come from a bond bank or it could come from the water fund that is provided by the state due to the pollution lawsuits that they won. And this, this would actually, this noble would prevent that money from being used and that would actually would be a tragedy. That's almost like taking the highway fund, highway funds that we get from the state and turning it away.
There is some red tape involved. I believe I heard, correct me Julian, I listened to the meeting last night and I tried to understand it. If, I heard if a property got sold, that the debt stays with the property. It does not, so the town is going to be putting liens on property for this debt? And the debt stays with the property? The prop, the owner doesn't, obviously if they leave town.
Well, I think that probably is because that's the only way to guarantee that the Water Fund doesn't get stuck with the bill.
I believe that's what I heard mentioned last night, but I can't quote it.
And a person getting a new home with the potable water already installed and everything is actually benefit as far as sale of that property as well and that's the part of, that's part of it.
But if the notice is paid on the, on the cost to attach to the home, that cost is going to be held as a lien on the property, just like a tax lien.
If they want to pay it off, they can because it's, compared to the price of a home, it's insignificant.
Well, I realize that.
It would just be add to the purchase price of the home.
Figure out where the cost is going to go.
Pete, wanted to add something to.
Julian, seeing that you brought it up, you've been talking about what it's got, what it's going to cost the homeowner to hook up and he's going to get the good loan. If no homeowner, homeowners hook up, what is it going to cost me to have that bond in place? The taxpayer, everybody in town, what is it going to cost us?
If we don't draw on those funds, nothing. And then can, the finance director probably could answer that question better.
Well, I think.
So it's a blank check that's just going to sit there waiting for us?
Well, I think part of it too is, it's not just.
We're not going to draw on it until we actually need it.
There hasn't been a decision on whether it's going to be a line of credit or it's going to be, take the funds as we need them.
It's going to be, it's going to be put on their water bill.
No, no, the finance director can reiterate it, but I think he said at a previous meeting, they haven't decided if it's going to be a line of credit or the full amount. Is that correct, Greg?
That's correct. But Mr. Brocchi's question was how much is it going to cost the taxpayer? And the answer to that is nothing. It is a water user-based program that will be paid for by the water users. No amount of it will be paid for by the taxpayers.
Okay.
Well, the people who use the water, taxpayers.
All that stuff. I mean, there's administration, administrative costs that aren't going to be able to be extracted and charged through the Water Department. It's just it, I mean, it's a government program, right? It's a, that's, that's my concern and I do think it's going to get out of hand and I know that from personal experience and some, just not me personally, but other family members that I know of that have things through a gas company, same thing, connect to gas, they give an incentive. The gas company charges you per month in your, in your monthly bill instead of paying you, charging upfront as an incentive for you to connect the gas. And there's like, you know, why would I pay it off? We'll just, I'm selling the house anyway in the future years. I'm just going to pay the minimum amount and, and then at the sale, agreed, it's going to be, it's going to be a cost at the sale that they're going to end up having to pay either in reduced costs of the house, whatever. It's just, it seems to me that there's, people can get home equity lines of credit, people can get personal loans, people can do all sorts of things, no different than when their well currently dries up and they have no water or such, they get a loan some other way. And I just don't think the town needs to be involved, but that's just my opinion.
That's good, thank you.
Could the town manager address the question?
I don't think.
Because he's the, he is the best expert on this because he's been involved with it from day one.
I don't think he had a question, I think he just wanted to state his point.
Okay, if it's not a question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think so. Is there, do you have another point on another article, Mr. LeBrec?
Yes, uh, on the after-hours fire service, has there been any investigation as to how many fire calls over the last 10 years or over the last year that have occurred after hours? And how many deaths are attributed to a slower response by not having a 24/7 service?
Yes.
Yeah, there is, I don't have that information in front of us, but one of our Budget Committee meetings, the Fire Chief came and did a presentation and explained all of this stuff. Originally, this $134,000 was in the Fire Department budget and as a Budget Committee, we requested that it be put on the warrant because that gives the taxpayers the decision of if they feel this coverage is necessary.
Can, can we, can he email the board and someone can email him the link to the meeting when the Fire Chief gave us his presentation? Because all those questions were asked and answered. I don't have, I don't write the, the numbers down, but.
Yeah, I, I don't believe we've had any big fires which resulted in deaths that I can recall at all. I just know every time I've seen a fire, they were, they were right there already. Both the Plastow people, the ambulance servers, Trinity, and I've seen Havrell and Atkinson Fire Departments show up right away. I mean, it was like the whole street be full of fire trucks. I think our response has been pretty good.
I can give you my personal email if you want to email me and I will get you the minutes and the video where he discussed that. Would you like that?
I'll just type in my email into the questions here and the, then you guys will have it.
Okay, thank you.
So you don't have to waste time on the meeting.
Did you have any other articles you wanted to speak on?
Yeah, a lot of these articles seem to say that no additional taxes will pull from the, the general fund unassigned fund. What is the unassigned fund balance?
You said that earlier.
No.
What did he? Are you asking what the, what the balance is or how much is the balance?
The balance in the general fund, the unassigned fund that all these articles are going to pull from.
We don't, we don't have an exact figure, but it was said that it was around $2 million.
$2 million in unassigned funds?
Correct. There is a policy that the Board of Selectmen adopted, keeping a certain amount of money in that unassigned fund. That's like the rainy day fund if something catastrophic happens.
Well, it's not really the rainy day fund, it's the fund so you can pay the bills throughout the year because you only get taxes paid twice a year. So you, and like your checkbook, you can't get a negative balance or else you have to, you have to borrow money, which is called a tax, tan, a tan, tax incentive note. The, the, how that fund gets its money is things like fees, like when you pay your taxes for your car registration and things like that, those go into that fund. And then at some point, we use those to pay, if we didn't have those, those revenues, your, the tax, the tax would, taxes would be higher because you wouldn't be able to draw from it. So that, basically because it's a bottom-line budget system that we have to work by, things that are inputs or revenues or fees that are paid go into the, go into the unassigned balance. And then they are, they become the working account to be able to pay bills. And also at the end of the year, when there are things that you need to do with the town, instead of drawing more on the tax bill, we withdraw from that fund to reduce the tax burden.
I will also add for your benefit, since you're just getting involved in how the town operates now, in the past, the Board of Selectmen has chosen to take money out of the unassigned fund balance and use it to pay down the tax rate. So in previous years, it was 500, 600, 750,000 dollars that went back to the taxpayers. And the reason why that's justified is because all of this money that goes into the unassigned fund balance is technically from overtaxation. Because we've overpaid previous years and that money is left over in the budget.
Yeah, there's revenues in there, but a lot of it is stuff that was, was over, overbudgeted for.
So the past few years, moving forward, the Board of Selectmen has decided to use it towards projects and fund projects instead of creating a warrant article that says to raise money from new taxation.
Yeah, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Right, but when it comes to recycling, we're going to, we're not going to pull from that fund. We're, we're using it for other things that may or may not be necessary and, and, you know, just like some of these other articles, recreation, you know, appropriating funds from that, appropriating funds for various, uh, Fire Department future expenses, things of that nature, not saying are bad things, but, uh, there seems to be a pot of money there that could be utilized.
I'd, I'd like to just.
And I am all for returning it to the taxpayers, by the way. I'd rather have reduced taxes than anything.
I wanted to finish Julian's point and I'm not going to put words in your mouth, Julian. I just wanted to continue where you left off, that I believe that the state, the DRA recommends, my brain is hurting me, 6% to 9% of your total operating budget that you shouldn't touch? Is that number right?
I think we voted to keep at least 10% or something like that. We said, we, a couple of years ago, we finally said, we need to make sure we minimize it so we, that we don't get in trouble.
I think you're right. The state recommended, the Board of Selectmen decided to go a little bit higher than the state recommendation. So at a $10 million budget, with that math, there's $1 million needs to supposedly. So at a $10 million budget, with that math, there's $1 million needs to supposedly should stay in there.
Bob?
Yeah, and also I want to add to Max An's comment. One of the things that has happened over the last few bunch of years is before the tax bill was higher in the budgets, the budgets themselves were higher, and I will just say there was a lot of extra money in there. And so they always ended up a lot more extra money in the unassigned balance, so we had to give it, we gave it back. But what we've done recent years, if we, the budgets have been more trimmed and more lean, so that extra money that doesn't get spent is a lot less. So the balance in there is lower, and that's why you don't see, we don't take a huge chunk like $750,000 and put it to bring the tax bill rate down, because we're doing it by just not having a bigger budget. The budget would be a lot larger right now if it had been done the way it was done in the past. So this committee's done a good job.
Yeah, I, I don't have the figures in front of us, but I know it's been discussed either this year or last year. Our budgets were only going up an incremental amount, and then the past two years, it increased. I think Bob Hamilton might have those numbers, or, go ahead.
Yeah, they went from $9 million to $10 million very quickly in two years. But I'd like to speak about unassigned funds and what they are. Simply, the way it was explained to me is, unassigned funds are funds in the General Fund that were put there through taxation or revenues or whatever, that are not appropriated, not appropriated for the budget, not appropriated for warrant articles or any other purposes that they would have. They're unassigned.
They can't be spent.
They're, they're unassigned. They can be spent. You're asking in warrant articles to spend unassigned funds.
But during the course of the year, unless somebody votes to spend it, you can't touch it.
Okay.
That's what it means. You can't just go in there and take it out.
But that's simply what unassigned funds are. They're not appropriated at this point.
Does the caller have anything else?
Mark, did Mark have his hand up? I mean, not Mark, Greg.
I can't...
Greg, were you going to say something?
I was going to give you a point of clarification. DRA recommends five to 18%, not only of the General Fund budget, but all of the money that is raised for all other governments, meaning the county and the school as well. Currently, the town of Plastow is around 8%. So, and as Mr. Kishka has said, I think the target is 10%. So the unassigned is about 2% below what the target rate is currently, for a point of clarification.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do you want?
And that's another thing I'd like to bring up. We have, every quarter, the, the school sends us this huge, huge bill. It's amazing. I've seen the numbers. And it has to be paid on time, and of course, if you don't bill your taxes but twice a year, the money wouldn't be there to pay the school bill. The town, each town has to pay the school quarterly.
Julian, have you had a tax anticipation note in the last...
We have, we have not had one since our last town, our previous town manager.
So we've got plenty of money in the General Fund.
We have managed it well, and the town manager has managed it so we don't get into that trouble.
Dean, is there anybody else, or did you, Ryan, did you have anything else to ask?
Nope, that's all I had, thanks.
Okay.
I have, no other individuals have spoken up. We have one more that's connected, but I'm not seeing any...
I think we can close the hearing then at, yeah.
I just want to add something to Bob said, where we had an increase suddenly in one year. Well, after the safety complex was, was approved, that was a bond, well, for the next 20 years, we got to pay that bond back, and that actually adds to the budget every single year, and you can't get rid of it. So there was a jump, just for that alone.
This was after, we're talking about...
Okay.
Julian, the debt service goes down every year.
Right, and it goes down every year.
Not significant. It's not significant. It doesn't, it's still quite a lump of money.
I'm going to, I'm going to close this hearing...
Goes down $15,000 this year.
At 8:45 PM, the public hearing on the 2021 budget is now closed. Thank you.
Just one quick question.
My last public hearing.
MS-7, when will that be ready for us to sign?
Oh, the MS-7?
Seven, right?
737?
737.
MS-7, MS-7, third one.
Greg just paused, so I can email, do you know when the MS-7?
Well, now I have final numbers, so I'll get working on getting them prepared hopefully by the, either, probably the beginning of next week, I would imagine.
Okay.
Depending on also if there's any other action that the Board of Selectmen, any other changes, but I will get right on it now that we've got the, the final Budget Committee numbers.
Okay, thank you. I'll email Dennis when I know it's ready.
And I want to thank the Finance Director for all the work he's done, because I remember the years before when we didn't have a Finance Director, this process was really tough to get answers. But we get all our answers as soon as we ask them, usually with our current Finance Director.
Do we have a date on deliberative?
Yeah, January 30th.
January 30th.
January, okay. Okay, so I will adjourn this meeting at 8:46 PM.